Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, the planning commission met on September tenth, two thousand and twenty-five, discussed those recommendations from Orangeburg County to rezoned property on Roseville Road, from forest and agriculture to business industrial for the purpose of increasing size of the Orangeburg Power Site. That site is made up of three point fourteen acres and has one lot that is forty-three point sixty-four acres. The lot has primary access from Roseville Road. It's approximately zero point eighty-six miles southwest of the city of Orangeburg and does not fall within the flood plain. Jason property owners were notified via U.S. mail about the upcoming planning commission meeting. They were given the opportunity to submit comments electronically via email, by phone, and writing to the planning director or attending meeting in person, and notice was posted in the T and D newspaper accordingly. There were zero citizens to express their support, zero citizens to express opposition. Planning submission after a hearing and discussion made their recommendation for a seven to zero unanimous approval.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Any questions, counsel? Not to get a motion second for some of us, Chair.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Ravenel, second by Ms. Frazier, that we pass second reading on item twelve as explained by the Administrator, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds? Ayes have it, motions carried. Item thirteen is what is considered as a request from Ashton Charleston Residential LLC to rezon property at Coach Road in Holly Hill, tax map number zero three fifty dash zero zero dash zero three dash zero zero three and zero one six of that same tax map number from forest and agriculture to residential single-family district. Mr. Administrator?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, planning commission met on September tenth to discuss those recommendations by Ashton Charleston Residential LLC. They're requesting to go from forest and agriculture to residential single-family for the purpose of constructing a residential single-family neighborhood. Site is made up of two lots with plus two hundred and forty point twenty-eight acres. Lot has primary access from Coach Road, State Road, Route seventy-four. Additional access is provided by secondary road, Tony Bay Road, and Old State Road. It is approximately four point two miles southeast of the town of Holly Hill. Lots do not fall within flood plain, and a small portion is identified by wetlands in the middle. Jason property owners notified by U.S. mail about planning commission meeting. They were given the opportunity to submit comments electronically via email, by phone, and writing to the planning director and/or attending in person. Notice was also submitted for comments with published in the T and D. There was one citizen expressed their support. There were two citizens expressed opposition of the request. There were eight written oppositions. After the planning commission hearing and discussion, they made the recommendation that you to approve it with a six to one approval for the request.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from counsel? If not, could I get a motion of second for some of us, Chair?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Garvin, and second by Ms. Frazier, that we pass second reading on item described by the Administrator, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds? Ayes have it, motions carried. Item fourteen is for a consideration of request from Orangeburg County to rezon property at one sixty-six Kirby Lane in Orangeburg. That's tax map number zero one seven one dash zero zero dash zero five dash zero zero three from commercial general district to business industrial.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The planning commission met on September tenth, two thousand and twenty-five, discussed the recommendation of Orangeburg County at property of one sixty-six Kirby Lane. This is a request to go from commercial general to business industrial for increasing the size of the Orangeburg County Power Site. Site is made up of one lot of point seventy-nine acres. Lot has primary access from Kirby Lane. It is approximately point eighty-six miles southeast of the city of Orangeburg and does not fall within flood plain. The Jason property owners were notified through U.S. mail. They were given the opportunity to submit comments electronically via email, via director by phone, submitting writing, and planning director or attending in person, and notice with the information of how to submit comments was submitted to the public. For the T and D, there were zero citizens that expressed their support, zero citizens expressed opposition. Planning Commission presents this to you with a unanimous seven to zero approval for the request.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Get a motion second, second reading on item fourteen.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Cooper Smith, second by Ms. Walker. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds? Ayes have it, motions carried. Item fifteen is for a consideration of request also from the county to rezon property at one one six Wildway Lane in Orangeburg, tax map number zero one seven one dash zero zero dash zero five dash zero zero four from commercial general district to business industrial district.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, the planning commission met on September tenth, two thousand and twenty-five, discussed the recommendation from Orangeburg County to rezon property at one sixteen Wilder Way Lane in Orangeburg to from commercial general to business industrial for the purpose of increasing the power site. Site is made up of one lot of five point zero five acres. Lot has primary access from Wildway Lane, property road which is accessed via Kirby Lane. It is approximately point eighty-six miles southeast of the city of Orangeburg. The lot does not fall within the flood plain and does not have identified wetlands on the property. Jason property owners were notified via U.S. mail about planning commission meeting. They were given the opportunity to make comments electronically via email, directly by phone, in writing by the planning director, or in person in the meeting, and it was also published in the T and D. There were zero comments expressed for approval and zero citizen expressed opposition. Planning Commission presents this to you with a seven to zero approval of their request.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Motion is second for item fifteen, please.
So moved, Mr. Chairman. Second.
Moved by Mr. Ravenel, and second by Ms. Frazier, that we pass second reading on item fifteen as explained by the Administrator. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds? Ayes have it, motions carried. Item sixteen is for the consideration of request from Orangeburg County to rezon property at Whirley Road near Charleston Highway, tax map number zero one eight four dash zero zero dash zero one dash zero two four from forest and agriculture to business industrial district.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, planning commission met on September tenth to discuss the recommendations from the county to rezon property at Charleston Highway across from Whirley Road. This request is going from forest and agriculture to business industrial for the purpose of increasing the size of the Orangeburg County Power Site. The site is made up of one lot of three point six nine acres. Lot has primary access from Whirley Road, and it is approximately three point zero seven miles southeast of the city of Orangeburg. Jason property owners were notified via U.S. mail about the upcoming planning commission meeting. They were given the opportunity to submit comments electronically via email, directly by phone, in writing to the planning director or attending in person. The notice was also submitted to the T and D for publishing, and there were zero citizens that expressed their opposition, zero citizens, I mean, zero citizens that expressed their support, two citizens that expressed their opposition, and one written opposition. Planning Commission, after hearing, discussion, made a recommendation of seven to zero approval.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Motion is second for item sixteen, for second reading, please.
So moved, Mr. Chairman. Second.
Moved by Ms. Cooper Smith, and second by Ms. Garvin for second reading on item sixteen. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds? Ayes have it, and motions carried. Next one is first reading on our audience, and we have three of those, I think, at least, got two.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Those two are first reading by title only.
Okay. First reading by title only.
Seventeen and eighteen.
Seventeen and eighteen. Thank you, Madam Administrator. An ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of an incentive agreement by and between Orangeburg County and one or more county collectively identified for the time being as Project S O C O, collectively related company acting for itself, one or more affiliates, and/or other project sponsors whereby the county shall convene to accept certain negotiated fees in lieu of ad luring taxes with respect to the establishment and/or expansion of certain facilities in the county collectively related project. Secondly, the benefit of a multi-county industrial or business park to be made available to the company and the project. And third, certain special source revenue credits in connection with the project. And fourth, other matters relating thereto. Item eighteen also is related to the same project, so I'm gonna read that one and let your attorney comment on it. That's item eighteen, is an ordinance to amend existing amended and re- real standard agreement for development of a joint county industrial park by and between Orangeburg County and Dorchester County to enlarge the boundaries of the industrial park to include certain properties located in Orangeburg County and now and/or be here after owned and/or operated by one or more companies collectively identified for time being as Project S O C O. Are one or more companies related thereto and authorizing other related matters. Madam Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Those are a lot of words, but it looks like it was well worth it. I guess here's the summary of the project again. Not that I negotiated it, this is OCDC and your Administrator, but I get to give the good word. The good word here is the capital investment is expected to be over a hundred and twenty million dollars, and the new jobs over five years are supposed to be four hundred and eighteen new jobs. In exchange for locating the project here, the county is willing to give the benefits that the state has allotted to us. One is the fee in lieu of tax agreement, which is a six percent assessment ratio for thirty years in the current middle, which is four hundred and eleven point three minutes. SSRC's years one through ten, seventy-five percent, years eleven through fifteen, sixty-five percent, years sixteen through eighteen, fifty percent, years nineteen through twenty, fifteen percent. The project will be placed in a multi-county industrial park. We believe that will be Dorchester County, but we need some further information before we can say that for certain, and the county is not donating any land to it. This is land that is owned by Tri-County Global Industrial. That is the conclusion of the summary.
Thank you, Madam Attorney, for the summary. Any questions from counsel? If not, could I get a motion of second for passes of items seventeen and eighteen, first reading by title only.
So moved, Mr. Chairman. Second.
Moved by Ms. Frazier, and second by Mr. Garvin, that we pass item seventeen and eighteen, first reading by title only, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds? Ayes have it, and motions carried. This is also a first reading item, and this is item nineteen, and it is an ordinance authorizing Orangeburg County to purchase approximately eight acres, more or less, of property located in Orangeburg for recreational purposes. Mr. Administrator?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, the county has a need to purchase approximately eight contiguous acres of land for the purpose of recreational purposes for the Cudova area, and we are seeking to get your approval for these purposes.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Any questions from any counsel pressing on this item, if not, give me a motion for first reading.
So moved, Mr. Chairman. Second.
Moved by Mrs.
Finally.
Moved by Mrs. McCasten, I guess that must be your decision. It's second, second by Ms. Walker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds? Ayes have it, and motions carried. Thank you so much. The next item is resolutions, and we have four resolutions, and the first resolution is item twenty. It's the resolution declaring October twenty twenty fifth breast cancer awareness month in Orangeburg County. I'll yield to the sponsor, Ms. Cooper Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. State of South Carolina, County of Orangeburg, sponsoring J.D. Cooper Smith, declaring Orange October twenty twenty fifth breast cancer awareness month in Orangeburg County. Whereas breast cancer tends to be more aggressive and even more difficult to treat when diagnosed earlier in life, but there are many effective treatments available. Also, in the United States, cases under the age, cases under the age of forty appear to be increasing slightly. And whereas, according to American Cancer Society Incorporated, an estimated three hundred sixteen thousand nine hundred and fifty women will be diagnosed with breast cancer awareness in the United States in twenty twenty five, making it the most common cancer in America in women. Also, it is estimated that two thousand eight hundred men will be diagnosed with breast cancer in twenty twenty five. Moreover, forty-two thousand one hundred seventy women and five hundred ten men will die from breast cancer in twenty twenty five. And whereas, an additional fifty-nine thousand eighty new non-invasive in situ breast cancer will be diagnosed in twenty twenty five. And whereas, the American Cancer Society claims that breast cancer will develop in one and in eight women, about thirteen percent of the women during their lifetime. And whereas, it is advised that you talk to your doctor about your personal and family medical history. The doctor can help you assess and manage your risk of breast cancer. The theme, the twenty twenty five theme for breast cancer awareness month is Mind Wide. Now therefore be it resolved, this sixth day of October twenty twenty five by the Orangeburg County Council, that October twenty twenty five is declared Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Orangeburg County, and all employees are encouraged to wear pink every Friday in October to show support for breast cancer awareness. Be further resolved, this sixth day of October twenty twenty five, that a copy of this resolution shall spread across the permanent written records of Orangeburg County. Attest, Connie N. Portee, Clerk of the Council, Orangeburg County Council Chair Johnny Wright, and yours truly, J.D. Cooper Smith.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Could I get a motion of second that we approve or pass this resolution?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Mr. Garvin, and second by Ms. Frazier, that we pass the resolution as read by Ms. Cooper Smith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds? Ayes have it, and motions carried. Next item is item twenty-one, and this is a resolution recognizing the day of national concern about young people and gun violence, and it reads as follows. Resolution recognizing October fifteenth, twenty twenty five, as a day of national concern about young people and gun violence. Whereas gun violence continues to have the devastating impact on communities across the nation, claiming the lives of thousands of young people each year. And whereas the day of national concern about young people and gun violence provides students with the opportunity to sign a pledge committing to responsible living, nonviolence, and pursuit of peaceful solutions. And whereas reclaiming our youth services in partnership with Orangeburg County's own local organization and law enforcement is working to empower youth and create safe, supportive environment for all young people. And whereas it is fitting and proper for the Orangeburg County Council to recognize the importance of youth voices, community safety, and collective effort to end gun violence. Now therefore be it resolved that Orangeburg County Council does hereby proclaim October fifteenth, twenty twenty five, as a day of national concern about young people and gun violence in Orangeburg County. Be it further resolved that the county council encourages schools, parents, community organizations, and residents to support youth in making positive choices, rejecting violence, and working toward a safer future for all. Adopted this since October twenty twenty five. Chast by the clerk, Connie N. Portee, and signed by the chairman. Could I get a motion of second?
So. Second.
Moved by Ms. Cooper Smith, and second by Ms. Frazier, that we pass that resolution as read, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds? Ayes have it, and motions carried. Item twenty-two is also a resolution. This is the resolution of the Orangeburg County Council declaring October as manufacturing month in Orangeburg County. And it reads that our state of South Carolina County, a resolution to the Orangeburg County Council declaring October as manufacturing month in Orangeburg County. Whereas manufacturing serves as a cornerstone of the economy of Orangeburg County, providing high-quality jobs, driving innovation, and contributing significantly to the county's tax base and economic vitality. And whereas Orangeburg County is a home to numerous manufacturing companies ranging from small enterprises to global corporations that produce goods and service values to South Carolina, the nation, and international markets. Whereas the manufacturing sector supports a diverse workforce, fosters career opportunities and spending, the county's commitment to workforce development through partnership with local schools, colleges, and technical institutions. And whereas manufrations generates a positive multiplier effect across other sectors such as logistics, construction, retail, professional services, and technology, creating a broad economic impact that benefits all the citizens of Orangeburg County. And whereas the month of October is recognized both nationally and by the state of South Carolina as a manufacturing month, and an initiative to highlight the importance of the sector promotes educational outreach and inspires the next generation of manufacturers. And whereas Orangeburg County desires to recognize the critical contribution of the manufacturing sectors, reaffirm its commitment to supporting manufacturers as essential partners in economic development, job creation, and community growth. Now therefore be resolved that the council encourages citizens, educational institutions, businesses, and community organizations to join in celebrating and supporting the achievement, the achievement of manufacturing in Orangeburg County. Attest and certification, I attest that the signature immediately above is that of Chairman of Orangeburg County, Johnny Wright Senior. I certify that this foreboding is constituted true, correct, and veridum copy of resolution adopted by the Orangeburg County Council. The resolution was notified in full compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act, read and received by the majority vote at the public council meeting. Attest by Connie Portee, Clerk of the Council. Get a motion of second to.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Ms. Cooper Smith, second by Ms. Frazier, that we pass item twenty-two as read, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds? Ayes have it, and motions carried. Item twenty-three is also a resolution in recognition of domestic violence awareness month, and I'll yield truly to Counsel Miss Walker, Counselwoman Walker, turn your last question.
State of South Carolina, County of Orangeburg, Resolution, Officer Letitia Walker, Councilwoman. Resolution in recognition of Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Orangeburg County. Whereas domestic violence is a serious public health, safety, and human rights issue that affects individuals and families in Orangeburg County, and whereas many survivors suffer in silence due to fear, stigma, lack of resources, or lack of awareness. And whereas the South Carolina Coalition Against Domestic Violence and Sexual Assault reports that the state averages thirty-two thousand five hundred and sixty-three cases of intimate partner violence annually, according to scabasa.org. And whereas domestic violence often escalates over time, affects children, and imposes heavy emotional, social, and economic costs on communities. And whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month, observed every October, provides an opportunity to raise awareness, educate the public, and honor those who have been affected by domestic violence. And whereas effective response to domestic violence requires cooperation among governments, law enforcement, social service agencies, nonprofits, faith communities, and citizens. And whereas Orangeburg County recognizes the importance of raising awareness, promoting prevention, educating the public, and supporting survivors, while also during this month, we remember and honor those who have lost their lives to domestic violence and those at risk. Now therefore be it resolved hereby recognizes Orangeburg, excuse me, October two thousand and twenty-five as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and encourages all citizens to learn more about domestic violence, support survivors, and engage in efforts to prevent abuse in all forms. All employees are encouraged to wear purple every Thursday in October to show support for domestic violence awareness. Be it further resolved, Orangeburg County Council encourages educational efforts to inform citizens about the science of domestic violence, available resources, legal protections, and how to safely intervene or provide support. And on this sixth day of October two thousand and twenty-five, a copy of this resolution shall be spread across the permanent written records of Orangeburg County. Attested by our clerk to counsel, Connie N. Portee, Mr. Chairman Johnny Wright Senior, Orangeburg County District One, and myself, Councilwoman Letitia Walker, Councilwoman for District Seven.
Thank you very much, Ms. Walker, and could I get a motion of second to?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Ms. Frazier, and second by Ms. McCasten, that we pass item twenty-three as read by Councilwoman Walker. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds? Ayes have it, and motions carried. That item on the agenda is official action, and it is an official action authorizing Orangeburg County to amend its lease with Nick Stilton Road Community Organization to include a properly known, in the Orangeburg County tax map system, yeah, this tax map number zero one seven four, that's zero two zero, zero six, one six, and zero zero three. Mr. Administrator?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, this is an extension of the lease for the Nick Stilton Community Organization. There's a piece of property that joins the current property that we're leasing to them, and this is just an additional piece that is added to it for your approval.
Thank you very much. Could I get a motion of second that we?
So moved, Mr. Chair. Second.
Moved by Mr. Garvin, and second by Ms. Frazier, that we approve item twenty-four as explained by Administrator, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds? Ayes have it, and motions carried. Next item is the cure map, and we have three of them. We go one at a time. Item E is a sole source justification about Motorola Solutions Maintenance Agreement. This is sole source because they are definitely, and administer.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, the Motorola Solutions Package that we use has to be maintained by Motorola, and therefore this is the sole source maintenance agreement for one year for a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars and ninety-one cents.
Thank you so much. If there are no questions, please give me a motion of second to pass.
So moved, Mr. Chair. Second.
Moved by Mr. Ravenel, and second by Ms. Frazier, that we pass item E, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds? Ayes have it, and motions carried. Next item, item B is fiscal year twenty-six dash zero nine twelve, Holly Hill Complex Educational Facility Roof Replacement. Mr. Administrator?
Yes, there is a request for proposal for the Holly Hill Complex Educational Roof Facility Replacement. The request was advertised on Orangeburg County website and bid net. The proposals were due on September twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five, and the county received six proposals. After local state MBA preference was given, AAR of North Carolina is deemed to be the responsible bidder for the facility in a project in the amount of a hundred and seventy-three thousand, eight hundred dollars.
Thank you so much. Any questions? Could I get a motion of second to approve the proposal as explained by Administrator? I think there's six of them, that's a good thing. I think it was also responsible in the lowest.
So moved. So moved. Second.
Moved by Mr. Garvin, and second by Ms. Frazier. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If there are no proposals, ayes have it, and the motions carried. Thank you so much. Item C is fiscal year twenty-six dash zero nine five, Orangeburg County Agriculture Building Acoustic Ceilings Demolition and Replacement Project. Mr. Administrator?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, the request for proposals was advertised on the county website and bidnet.com. Proposals were due September fifth, and the county received one proposal from chambers and associates after local and state MBA preference, and it was deemed a responsible bid based upon the recommendations that we received from the facility's director, manager, and the company itself. So we're requesting that you approve this bid in the amount of a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars.
Thank you so much. Any questions? Now give me a motion of second for item C to approve.
So moved, Mr. Chair. Second.
Moved by Mr. Garvin, and second by Ms. Frazier, that we approve item C. The cure map as explained by Administrator, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposeds, ayes have it, motions care. Thank you so much. Next item was appointment of board of commissioners and committees, and there is an appointment to the Orangeburg County Library Board, District Three, and I'll yield to District Person for that appointment.
All right. Mr. Chairman, would you like to make a motion that we appoint Ms. Sheridan Coleman to the Orangeburg County Library Board of District Three?
I get a second.
Second.
Moved by Ms. McCaster, District Person for that district, and second by Ms. Walker that we appoint Ms. Coleman.
Sheridan Coleman.
Coleman, to that position. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Ayes have it, motions care. An update from Park and Recreation and Agriculture Committee, and I yield to Chairperson, Mr. McCaster.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we didn't make any votes or any decisions. Had a lengthy discussion, but no action was taken. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Appreciate it. Next item is a vote for executive session, and this is also falls under the code as described by the attorney earlier. And under this item, we have Project Panther and other items, a couple of other projects update, and also an update on the status of search for economic government director. There is no decision, and there is no vote, so when we do an executive session, once you go out of meetings, there will be no more, go into executive session, but there will be no more votes, so that will be in it. So at this time, can I get a motion second for going to executive session for those items that I just?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Cooper Smith and second by Ms. Frazier that we do an executive session for the items that I just mentioned. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Ayes have it, and motions care. Before we vote for adjournments, any comments from the council person?
Yes, sir.
Yes, my head.
All right, well.
And normally, y'all know.
Litter.
Litter. October has been designated as Fall Litter Cleanup Month in Orangeburg County. During the spring cleanup in Orangeburg County, over one hundred thousand pounds of litter was picked up. That's a lot of litter. Over one hundred thousand pounds, including tires. So please get busy in your community. I can't pick up much litter, but I sure can talk. Spread the word, because we want to make Orangeburg a welcoming place and not an unbecoming place. This is our home, so let's take care of home. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Frazier.
By now, you have all heard about the incident that occurred upon South Carolina State University campus. And now the finger pointing has started in our community and in the press. Let's continue to pray for the families who are affected and those who are indirectly involved with this tragedy. As the details unfold, let's continue to pray for the families and those who are affected by the tragedy. I repeated that. As we all bear witness, there is an increase in violence in this county and the community. This is not the time to finger point and cast blame by a time, but it is a time to reflect and communicate on how we prevent such incidents of this nature occurring in our community, and especially on our college campuses. This incident not only impacted the victims and families, but the South Carolina State University's families also. I would like to commend the president for airing his concern.